Meeting call to order, please. Please join me in a prayers. Today, as the session opens, we pray that your presence will be before us and everyone who serves in the decision-making process of our city. We pray for directions which will lead our city to be strong and unified. May we continue the legacy of our founders. May we be granted this day the wisdom to make decisions which will be for the good of our city. We also pray for your special blessings and all those who are working to transform our city and make it a better place to live and work. Amen. Please join me in the allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, liberty and justice for all. Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Counselor Yem.
Here.
Mayor Chow.
Here.
Counselor Drinkwater.
Here.
Counselor Gishia.
Here.
Counselor Janess.
Here.
Counselor Leahy.
Here.
Counselor Mercier.
Here.
Counselor Noon.
Here.
Counselor Robinson.
Here.
Counselor Rourke.
Here.
Counselor Scott.
Here.
That's eleven present.
Any memorials tonight? Counselor Mosier.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to offer a moment of silence in docking chamber for Teresa Terry N. Byrne. She was the wife of Raymond Byrne who passed away in 1978. Terry began her working life as a mill girl in Lowell. She then worked for Commodore Foods in Lowell for seventeen years. Following her time there, she worked at Wang Labs in Lowell as a quality control inspector for ten years. After her time at Wang Labs, she worked for Market Basket in the bakery. Terry was an active member of the Lowell Senior Center as well as the Chemsford Country Club and the Easton Club. Terry is survived by her son Richard Byrne, her three daughters Pat Preventia and her husband Frank Preventia, Janet Duquette and her husband Michael, and Donna Desmond and her husband Gary, her nine grandchildren and her ten great-grandchildren. She was the loving grandmother of the late Kathleen and Shannon Desmond. We offer our condolences to her family, relatives, and many friends. She will be truly missed. Let us also offer a moment of silence in docking chamber to all those who have passed since our last council meeting as well as all the people who died in the war in the Ukraine, the children and teachers who perished in the classroom massacre at Robb Elementary School in Uvalde, Texas, and the thirteen people in the shooting at the supermarket in Buffalo, New Hampshire, and the church with one dead and five parishioners wounded in Laguna Woods, California. We pray for the survivors to recover and pray that those who died rest in peace. Thank you.
Any other memorial? Mr. Clerk, dim the light, please. We now go to Mayor's Business, 2.1, Communication Remote Zoom Participation, Motion to Accept and Place on File by Counselor Drinkwater, Second by Counselor Yem, on favor of the I post a no, the I have it, motion is carry. Three, City Clerk, 3.1, Minutes of Economic Development, Minutes of Economic Downtown Development Subcommittee, May 24th, City Council Regular Meeting, May 24th, for acceptance, Motion to Accept and Place on File by Counselor Janess, Second by Counselor Scott, on favor of the I post a no, the I have it, motion is carry. We now go to four, Communications from City Manager, these are the motion responses. We'll start with A, Motion Response, Filling Stations. Any common question, Counselor Janess or Counselor Robinson?
Mr. Mayor.
Who wants to go first, Counselor? Do you want Counselor Janess to go first, Counselor Robinson? Counselor Janess?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, so thanks for this response. I know it went through the, through the Police Department and not through the Law Department. I don't know if the Law Department needs to do anything to make, to adjust this ordinance such that we can adopt it, or if they have any comments about, you know, what we, what we should do here. But I do thank the, the City Manager and the Police Chief for getting the ball rolling on this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Through, through the City Manager, you want to make comment, or Counselor Robinson?
Thank you for this. This came by means of a neighborhood meeting. We had the conversation. Chief recommended this was something that he thought is worth taking a look at, and if there's, if this is something that I, Police Force thinks is going to be a valuable tool, the system in this, please just direct us as to what the council needs to do. Thank you.
Mr. Manager or the Chief?
Thank you very much, Counselor.
Counselor Gishia, you want to make a comment now? Do you want to?
Yeah, I just want to make a motion to send the, the guidelines from Springfield to the Law Department for review. I think that that's something that we should look at for review and then come back to the council with a report on, on the actions and have her work with the chief on these issues. So I'd like to make a motion to send the Springfield ordinance to the Law Department for review.
Second.
Second by Counselor Miss, Counselor by Motion, Motion by Counselor Gishia, Second by Counselor Mosier, on favor of the I post a no, the I have it, motion is carry. Counselor Leahy?
Question. So I know this has gone to Law Department, but on the ordinance, is the fine paid by the gas station or the, or the person who buys the gas? Wasn't very clear.
So I think that we could probably draft the ordinance and change it however that the council or the Law Department saw fit in terms of the enforcement action. I think Springfield takes it both against the employee and/or the, the station, depending. And first offense was a, a warning for all offense, and then every subsequent offense is the hundred dollar fine. But I, I believe it can go against, if I read it correctly, the owner, the proprietor of the station, or the person that actually does the selling of the fuel.
All right. So they're going to have to, like, if we pass this, they're going to have to really watch their cameras when people pull up because there's so many stations now and you just pull up, put your credit card in, they don't know if you're filling your car or a lawnmower or whatever, right? So.
Exactly. And it would be, only be for people that pull up, drive them into the station. Anyone that trailers their vehicle into the service station, that would not be a violation. If they drive, it would be a violation to drive to the station, and if the station or the attendant filled that vehicle that, that wasn't conveyed on a registered vehicle.
All right. And the only other question is, I'm just wondering if we should not be so nice, maybe we should do a warning and then go right to 250, 500 because this is a serious thing so we can discuss the fines at the Subcommittee meeting. Thank you.
Counselor Robinson?
Thank you. I have a question. Could this be amended to the point where this would apply to gas purchases? I mean, because that way, I mean, it's, it's trackable data, isn't it? For people with the unregistered uninsured that are using their cards to fill the vehicles?
So it's, it's more tracking the stations that are selling to the illegal vehicles that are driving in as opposed to someone that legally trailers them into the station? So I, I don't know if, if it's something other than us investigating or them calling us when someone pulls in, which would obviously be, that, that would be what we're looking for, is some compliance and letting us know when people pull in to the station or they have repeat customers. So hopefully enforcement wouldn't be the only tool.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and through you to the council. I think the Superintendent said it perfectly. What we're, what we're really trying to stop is these individuals pulling up and just filling up. That's at least my thought process on this.
Yes.
To make sure that these folks aren't doing that. Now granted, they may be doing it in other locations, but let's just not make it as easy as it has been before.
Any other comments or questions? Here none. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Go to B, Motion Response, Engine Closure Policy. Any comment, Counselor Robinson?
Thank you. Again, I see on the bottom of this report, it is mentioned, these units have been subject to maintenance brownouts. So again, I know we're purchasing one, one piece of equipment this year, but it's something we have to be mindful of because we've all heard it loud and clear that the residents do not want any closures. So, but thank you for this, and, and again, this is something that I've been trying to track down for quite some time. So, thank you, Chief.
You're welcome.
Counselor Gishia?
Thank you, Mayor Chow. Over the last few months, we've been talking a lot about company closings and we, I thought had, again, it must be one of those verbal agreements that may live or may not live, but we talked about no company closings in funding the overtime. But in the proposed budget that I just read, on page thirty-nine of the proposed budget, it says there's an estimated of 427 for next fiscal year going to happen. Another thing that you also read when you start looking at it, we propose that we're looking for an equipment list from each department so that we can see the age of the equipment so that we can kind of try to get ahead of the curve on maintaining these apparatuses in, in every department, not just the fire department, but also looking at equipment everywhere and understanding what is the delta, when is the day that it's supposed to, or it's costing us more to maintain than it's actually worth, because sometimes we spend more money fixing things than we could to purchase things, and the downtime is costing us on that end. So those are a couple of things that, that we've, I think as a council, have been trying to focus on since January, and we're still waiting for the equipment report. But the thing that really got me was reading that there's, there's a proposed, proposal in the current proposed budget of 427 closures of companies, which that to me seems extremely high if we're committed to putting the overtime in there, and it's on page thirty-nine if anyone wants to look and look. And also, you know, when we look at staging, you know, having on staff 213 firefighters at all times, why didn't we come in and look at hiring 218? So we always know that there's always five missing from retirements. We've had this patent for twenty years that we have a number that we want, so we hire two just that number. And we always have this delta of under all, all the time. So if the number is 213 and we know that we're always going to be down five, why wouldn't we put the number at 218 knowing that we're really only actually going to fund the 213? How come we don't ask that question through you to the Fire Chief?
Through Mr. Manager to the Chief?
Yes, so that would some, be something that would have to be negotiated through the collective bargaining agreement, bumping that number up from 213 to 218.
Why would we have to negotiate that on hiring in a collective bargain agreement? Wouldn't that be just a budgeted item through the, the manager's office? Wouldn't, wouldn't that be, okay, we want to hire 218 employees? Why would we have to collectively bargain hiring extra employees? Could I ask that question to the city solicitor through you, Mr. Mayor?
Sure. Through Mr. Manager to Madam Solicitor?
Certainly. The CBA does indicate what the city is required to have in terms of a number. However, while that number can be adjusted, it's, if your point is, it's hard to imagine that the union would, would be objecting to an increase of that number. I mean, it's, it's never been something that I'm aware of that has been negotiated. The issue that has been negotiated in the past is our failure to meet that minimum number that's required.
You know, over the last few months, I've been listening intensively to the Fire Chiefs say that we can't get people trained, we can't get them into training right now to do the hiring and stuff. That's why I think if, and the number is always a delta where we have money left over in personnel because we never get to that actual number and maintain it. We're always underneath that number. And I just think that if we're really serious about changing the way that we look at this and trying to get to that actual number, we should be probably budgeting more than that at, at 218, knowing that we're going to get back those, that, that, those funds in that account. And I just think if we're looking at public safety, and that would curb some of the overtime, I would think, Chief. So that's just my thoughts on this. When I read again, 427 closures, company closures, I just think maybe that's an editing mistake that was just copied over from the previous year. And I just think if, if it is, we need to do better on our edits during this budget time because a lot of us are starting to read more and more, and we're going to look at all these numbers and try to polish this budget so that it makes sense to everybody. Thank you.
Counselor Noon?
Thank you, Mr. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chief, a while back, we were talking about a recruitment issue. And I think you did mention about having some in-house training for the new recruit. Where are we at on that, Chief?
So we are at the point where in June, we will be exploring what other resources are available through Fire District Six as far as facilities, instructors, and training. We're also taking a look at the qualifying process which requires a certain type of instructor, availability of burn buildings for different types of parts of the training in order that they will be certified firefighter one and two. So it is exploratory at this time, but it is certainly not a short-term option. It's one of those things that could potentially come to fruition at some point next spring.
Thank you, Chief.
Counselor Leahy?
Thank you. I just had a, want to clarify what Counselor Gishia was saying. What we do with the Police Department is we put more people in the training. Is that what you're trying to get at, to get the numbers up? Like, if we usually put ten people in the training, why don't we put thirteen people in so when we have more retirements, the numbers stay higher?
And the only way to do that would be increase the original number of firefighters to the 218 number because then you would have more in. If you're doing the other way, you can only actually go to the 213, which they're currently doing now. But at points, what happens is people retire while people are in there and it drops that number lower rather than have it base the delta higher. And you can use that money out of contingencies just to offset and then put the money back as the, as the budget goes along, as those savings are there.
All right. Thank you. And then I just have one other comment, Chief. I saw the Conkers Street fire, and I just want to let you know that the neighbors were talking to me and they were very pleased on how fast you responded over there, and they were very happy to see everybody there in the response. So, and that was a miserable fire because everybody was covered with insulation and they, it was humid and they were soaking wet. So kudos for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
Counselor Rourke?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the Fire Chief. Chief, is, do we have an active reserve list right now?
We do have an active reserve list. We are currently finishing repopulating it with an additional 21 individuals, and we expect that process to complete probably the third week of June, at which point we will begin the hiring again.
Is that, so the list is, is that thirty? Is that what it's at?
Thirty-three.
Thirty-three. So I know you said District Six and training, but isn't it conceivable that, you know, if you're going to hire five to ten new officers, firefighters, that they could go anywhere in a state to be trained?
So there are three locations that they can be trained right now, sponsored through the Department of Fire Services. They have three campuses. Stowe is the main one. The second one is in Springfield, and just four to five years ago, they opened one in West Bridgewater. So those are the three state facilities. Now, there are several other communities that are either in groupings of fire departments where they're running their own training locations, for example, Fall River. And then there are big cities like Worcester and Boston that are also doing that. However, the majority of the work that those communities are doing is through accreditation with the Department of Fire Services, which is the single agent for the training of firefighter one and two for the state of Massachusetts. So even if you are doing all of your training, for example, in Boston, you still have to be certified by the Department of Fire Services through the State Fire Marshal's Office in order to have firefighter one and two trained individuals.
So if Springfield has openings for, for trainees, which conceivably, it currently does have openings, we wouldn't send out our new hires to Springfield?
We could if we ended up in a more desperate situation than we have now. We're talking about a two-hour transit and the fact that the city may have to put those individuals up somewhere out there, out west, since they're traveling back and forth every day.
I mean, I would guess that if you're going to give somebody a position of a firefighter, I mean, if, you know, for a couple of months, you got, you know, drive to Springfield to be trained and get on active duty, you would think that, you know, it certainly could be offered to the individual, the candidate, do, you know, give you the job, this is what you're going to have to do for the next, what, sixteen weeks? I mean, you know, is, is the option hasn't been looked at, especially if we're dealing with, you know, closures or the reason why we have to close sometimes is a staffing problem?
So all of the, up until recently, all of the facilities, all three of the campuses had 24 individuals in their class structure, with the Stowe facility running two classes basically in tandem, interlocking with each other. And they have been increased out in Springfield, and they have been increased in West Bridgewater up to thirty. They have not increased the sizes yet in Stowe. I certainly would entertain that as other departments have. For example, most recent graduation class in Springfield, Waltham took advantage of, and they put, they put nine people through it. But those people also lived out there in firehouses for the course of the week. So that's not beyond an option for us, but there, there isn't really an offer of an increase in time. In other words, taking those recruits and moving them forward yet through the academy. If that becomes available, then we certainly would consider it.
So Springfield was available, or West Bridgewater was available, and housing was available through staying at the firehouses. I mean, would that be offered to a candidate, say, hey, look, here's your spot, this is what you're going to do, and either say yes or no? I'm sure you would find nine or ten people from that list that would say, yes, absolutely.
Well, because that has to come from the Department of Fire Services. I can request spots, and then I can request a location, but I can't, like, they, they don't tell me, hey, I got four spots and whatever, and they talk directly to my personnel. My personnel would get an assignment from me. So if we look at the situation ago, we're short on so many people, and we have an option of increasing, of moving up their time that they can actually start, then we would say, okay, we're going to send four people to Springfield because this is the time that's available, and then we would try to make arrangements with local departments to put those people up.
Okay. Has that been done at Pasteloff Springfield or West Bridgewater?
It has not.
Thank you.
Counselor Yem?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you, to the managers. The Chief, it's just for my own education, sir. I do not know Engine Six, Engine Four, and Engine Ten, so the period paragraph you mentioned, Engine Five, Fourth Street, Engine Eight, Mammoth, Engine Nine, Fairmount, it would be helpful. I'm new to this whole geographic, so that would be helpful, sir. I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Certainly, Counselor. So Engine Six is located with Lada Four on West Sixth Street and covers Centerville area, but also it is first alarm to areas like downtown, even the Lower Highlands, and also, excuse me, the Lower Belvidere area, and also into Pawtucketville. Engine Four is the Lower Belvidere Station servicing out of Belvidere, the Oaklands. It also responds into South Lowell and crosses the river into Centerville. And Engine Ten is located at Old Ferry Road. That is the first new piece for all of Pawtucketville, but it will, can be on the first alarm for Centerville, parts of downtown, and also parts of the Upper Highlands.
Thank you, sir.
Any other comments? Seeing none, thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
We'll now go to the next motion response. C, Gurillo Technical High School repairing firehouses. Any comment, Counselor Robinson?
Thank you. I'm glad to see the kids able, or potentially be able to come in in the fall to help out. And again, we have some groups in the city that are also available to help out with the unionized youth build, for one. I know they're looking for some credit hours, so, I mean, any of these kind of projects, we can bring kids in that get real deal, hands-on experience, I'm all for. Thank you.
Counselor Yem?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to thank Mr. Byrne, this great, great initiative you took, Mr. Byrne, and I would love to see if you could take that initiative a step further. We have great student at UMass Lowell, and if we can create like a co-op program similar to the Northeastern University where college student take a certain, you know, professional development at the different departments. So I'm sure the city of Lowell, various department, engineering department, planning development could use the, the student, UMass Lowell student with that degree and, you know, for, for part of the project or some of the project that the city is working on these past months. some of the project that the city is working on these past month. We have student from Harvard Graduate School. They came to the Acre and the Centerville and they do a community planning and they come up with a great, great suggestion and idea. And I'm hoping that, you know, we can maybe as a council, look at some of these proposal proposals that we can maybe eventually be part of the of the overall neighborhood planning that the city wants to do for the next 10 years. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and through you to the council. Ms. Davis, we do have a scheduled meeting, Counselor, coming up and I want to say it's next week. But I've also had an opportunity to talk to Chancellor Chen, incoming chancellor, Vice Chancellor Chen. And that's something that we need to rally back on. She's been a little bit busy with with graduation and whatnot. And we are going to discuss this because it's something that the council has talked about and it could be some real opportunity to, you know, find our next professionals from the university. So, this is really something moving forward. But as you know, the devil's in the details on how we're going to get this accomplished.
Counselor Yen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just thank you, Mr. Manager. I do also have a planning to meet with incoming Chancellor Chen and I mentioned to her because both of her campus locate in the Acres. So, that would be vital that we sit down and she's agreeing. We need to make some time. But I do want to pursue the economic development and in partnership by using talented UMass Lowell student in various city department, particularly like you mentioned, Mr. Manager, a future traffic engineer, right? Something like that. So, that's a city needed. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Mr. Manager.
Seeing the other hands, we now go to D, motion response, Riverwalk Snow Removal. Any comment, Counselor Janess?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, thank you to the interim commissioner for this report. Glad to know that this is in the regular rotation for snow removal. The original motion, however, also asked about just general maintenance things on the Riverwalk, repairing of, you know, concrete, wood, railings, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So, I'm just a little curious if that if those things all fall under the the city's auspices or if they're, you know, part of some other organization. Specifically today, Mr. Manager and Mr. Commissioner, I sent you an email with some some photos of of some issues that I I found on a recent walk that were, you know, given to me by some constituents. So, I just wanted to make sure those were on your radar and hopefully we can get them addressed specifically. The boardwalk that's behind the water, the stormwater overflow station adjacent to the Songus Arena, there's a lot of those boards that are loose and popping up and are tripping hazards and need to be refasted or replaced. So, hopefully we can get that looked at. I know this is obviously the start of the busy season for the Riverwalk. So, I want to make sure that's in good shape for everyone that's that's going down to visit. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Through Mr. Manager, Commissioner, you have any comment?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Thank you, Counselor Janess. We plan on doing some of the repairs that you brought to our attention. And I will reach out. I have a contact at National Park Service and ask them. I don't know if we own all that, but I do know that we have good partnerships with National Park Service. And so, but we can do some, we can help and assist with some of the repairs. We're doing some work in the downtown area. We can expand that work and get there. I can do a walk through with Lands and Buildings and Jim Green and take care of some of the safety issues that are over there right now as soon as possible and get them corrected and and tie back into National Parks or the some of the state departments that own maybe some of that property. I really don't know that.
Sure. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and through you to the council. The there is a little smattering of who owns the property down there. So, that's something we probably need to do, reach out to UMass as well as National Park and have some type of master maintenance agreement. That's something that that should be done. And then thank you very much, Counselor, for bringing that to our attention. We'll make sure that we address that.
Counselor Robinson?
Thank you. So, as far as the continued maintenance goes, are we saying that certain sections, City Lowell Parks Division is going to be responsible for the maintenance? Because I know for years, the piece by River Place Towers behind the Songus Arena, that was all Parks Department responsibility for maintenance. I have heard some complaints about the weed whacking and upkeep down there. I'm just trying to figure out this, again, like Counselor Janess spoke, this specifically talks about winter operations and it is a mixed bag of ownership. I think we need to really figure out who's going to because it's very early in the year for the overgrowth.
I can talk to the winter operations. We we take care of the Riverwalk and the winter operations. I know that for a fact. I talked to the parks and we maintain it. Shannon Cohen, they definitely I talked to them and absolutely we have the Bobcats go through there a number of times along with along the routes of sidewalks and over by Songus Arena and all around those areas. So, winter operations, we take care of it. I'll I'll circle back with him and ask him about anything down around that area, you know, concerning like park benches and some of the other things that were brought to my attention by Counselor Janess.
Thank you.
No other comments? Thank you, Commissioner. We now go to E, motion response, pool and splash pad update. Any comment, Counselor Scott or Counselor Robinson? Counselor Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd just like to thank Commissioner Byrne for making this happen. Also, the Lands and Buildings staff and park staff and anyone that was involved in it. O'Donnell had been closed for two and at least two, maybe three seasons that I know of. I drove by on Monday. It was 90 degrees, the temperature in my car, and both parks that I went by were packed, absolutely packed. So, it was just a great sight to see, especially in a city like Lowell. I mean, having a place for people to go and cool down is so important. My only question that I have about it is, do we now have staff trained to continue to keep them maintained and open? Because I know that was the issue I had been told.
We have we have plumbers on site that if there's an issue with them, they know how to take care of any issues there. We also, we have people that are trained as far as talking to the control sets that we manage turning them off and on. There's one park, I believe, that has an issue that we're working that out and we're dealing with the the representative from that company, the controls company, to try to solve that issue. So, we can maintain it. We have good plumbers here. The staff did a great job getting Lands and Buildings and the Parks Department did a super job getting these splash pads ready. And we're still painting some of them this week so that come Saturday again, we'll have it completely ready. So, hopefully, without any problems, I think right now, we have a good staff to maintain them.
Thank you.
Counselor Gishia.
Through you, Mayor, child, Commissioner Byrne. Was all of this work done in-house?
All the work was done in-house, yes.
I want to commend your staff because a few months ago, we were told none of this could be done in-house and it had to go out and we had to go to Texas and other places to get people to do this. I want to commend you and your staff for stepping up and getting this done for the residents of the city.
Counselor Robinson?
Thank you. Yeah, I'd like to echo what was said. Thank you for getting this open. This has been something that a lot of members of the community have thrilled about. I have one question. I know it's been a couple pieces here and there that have prevented in the past us from opening these. Since we're up and running, could we possibly look into purchasing some of the extra pieces before we actually need them again? So, we have in stock, you know, and now would be the time to kind of look out and grab what we know we might need for next year.
I'll I'll run that by Jim Green tomorrow morning and his plumbers because it's more plumbing pots than anything.
Thank you very much, though, for getting this. Thank you.
Counselor Robinson, I see the motion response on McPherson later on as well, since we have the commissioner here. Do you have any comments? You want to move that up and have any comment on that or?
Um, sure. I mean, we can move that up, but actually, I was intended on trying to move that to a maybe a joint subcommittee.
Okay.
For further discussion.
We'll deal with it then. Right. No other comment on that particular motion response? We now, Counselor Gishia.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My only comment is, as you read through it, you see that sewer separation is part of this this piece. And through you to the manager, I'm not sure on how large of a trunk. Is it J?
No, no. Counselor Robinson wants to wait. Okay, so, yeah.
I thought you were sorry. Thank you.
Yeah, that was my intent as well when I asked Counselor Robinson. But we'll wait. So, no other comments on E. We'll go to F, motion response, City Hall flag poles. Counselor Leahy?
All set.
Thank you, Counselor. We now go to G, motion response, First Street Deadwood. Counselor Robinson?
Thank you. And in the report, it mentions they're always open for neighborhood suggestions on assistance. I know Lowell Litter Crew has been interested in helping out with that alongside the DPW for a heavy lift such as this. Thank you.
Through Mr. Manager, through the commissioner?
Mr. Mayor, through to the council. Counselor, we've been in contact with Lowell Litter plus our own staff. So, we have a game plan, a strategy right now for June 11th, Saturday, to do some maybe prior to that, a couple of days prior to that, to do tree trimming up there and bringing in some dumpster as well. Lowell Litter is going to they have a lot of volunteers that day that are going to help and assist us, bringing stuff off the hill, obviously, safety purposes, making sure that we're all safe up there so that no one gets hurt while they're volunteering and helping us. And hopefully, it's a it's a big push to take care of First Street, to clean it all up. I'm not so sure we're going to get it on June 11th. We'll get a lot of it. But we're going to we're going to have a good crew out there and we'll have the City of Lowell Tree Crew there. We might even have a private contractor crew that we have still money left and we might get them in there before the June 11th date so that we're not bumping into one another and that we don't have any danger going on when when they're trimming some trees.
That's great. Thank you very much.
Counselor Yen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you, through the city managers, through Mr. Byrne. Just for my own education, sir, what is a window maker?
It's a widow tree. So, it's a again, apologize for a typo. So, I apologize.
All set, Counselor Yen?
I still don't I still window. Is that window or?
Widow.
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 Widow. If it were to fall, it would hurt somebody.
Yeah.
Widowmaker.
I'm sure people are.
We'd actually caught that that went already to print. It's it's an interesting thing, Counselor. Sometimes we catch these things as they're going into print.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor and Mr. Manager. Mr. Byrne, thank you.
Counselor Leahy?
Thank you. I just I'm sure you with all the trees blooming and all that, we're going to have traffic control out there?
On First Street?
On.
On the highway?
Pull everything down because?
I I don't know if how how the danger, you know, some of the some of the issues that that might be an issue that we might not be able to get down to the bottom area or everything. I think we'll be bringing everything up to First Street.
All right. Because I I was part of the first big cleanup a year ago and it's a lot easier to go downhill at our age. So, we should probably make sure that there's some traffic control, Mr. Mayor, should we could? Because with all the overgrowth now, we did it in April when it wasn't, you could see up the hill. Now, you can't see in there anymore. It's so overgrown. And if anything ever comes sliding down into the road, it's
Right.
that could be a problem. I mean, it was a lot of work just climbing up and down that hill. So, so just to be aware of it. Thank you.
Counselor Robinson?
Thank you. Real quick, are we going to be able to do any like information before to make sure the residents don't park along that First Street stretch? Maybe notify somehow because I know sometimes, especially on the weekends, people like to sleep in and that whole stretch line in that area we're going to be working is usually lined with residents' cars. So, I don't know if maybe get out there a couple of days early and put some signage up or something. Thank you.
No other comments? We'll go to the next motion response. H, Bowley Street Winter Operations. Counselor Robinson?
Thank you for this. Hopefully, we're not discussing winter operations for quite some time, but thank you.
No other comments? We'll go to the next item. I, motion response, American Legion Building. Counselor Gishia. Thank you, Counselor. We now go to J, motion response, McPherson Park Splash Pad feasibility. Counselor Robinson?
Thank you. Looks great. I intend to send it off to a subcommittee for further discussion on this because it's a large response. And but I think other counselors might have had something to say before we make the motion. Oh, can I make the motion to send it to a joint neighborhood finance subcommittee, please? That way
Sure.
we could kind of flush out
Sure.
the funding possibilities.
Sure.
I second.
Thank you.
Motion by Counselor Robinson, second by Counselor Yen. Counselor Gishia?
And just want to point out a couple of things while we're in the planning stages of this. As we look at, you know, we're looking at the combined sewer overflows and we're looking at putting a trunk across there. I'm just wondering if we can shoot elevations from Jewett Street and connect into that area because that's where the floods are? And how big of a trunk line can we run from this project over so that we can accept those flooding issues and maybe send it that way instead of going the other way? And I don't know the elevations. I don't know what's in the road, but maybe it's something that we could look at through you to the manager.
Sure. Mr. Manager? Through to Ms. Clancy?
Ms. McCall.
McCall.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
I apologize. Krista kept on calling you. That's the name stuck in me. Thank you.
Thank you. Through you to the council. This is just a conceptual plan. You know, the wastewater department has identified Centerville as the next major neighborhood that they want to do CSO in. So, this is still in its infancy. So, we will work with wastewater on that. The project extent of what we can do for sewer separation, obviously, will depend on funding availability, which I'm sure we'll discuss at the finance subcommittee. And we also have not assessed how much stormwater the St. Louis Park can take. So, we will definitely make that as part of the project and our feasibility. So.
One one other thing that I have is I look at these projects and I think it's a beautiful project. But as we look at projects like this and we look at outside learning space, I think that everything in here comes with a cost for maintenance cost, you know, and as we look at it, we're seeing that, you know, biobasins are not easy to maintain. As much as people think, they just grow and it's a bio basin. You still have to maintain them. So, those are just questions when you look at it is are we going to add more Parks Department employees? Because as we can see, you know, when we look around the city, some fields are not being maintained to where they need to be now. And then we're going to add beautiful space. And I'm not against the space. I'm just saying that everything comes with a maintenance cost, a future cost and and an upkeep cost. And I just think that when we start planning these things, we should probably start looking at what it would cost to maintain these during that calendar year, fiscal year. Thank you.
Okay. No, Counselor Yen?
I just want to commend Ms. McCall. It's impressive reports. And I I concur with Counselor Gishia that whatever project we take on in the future, we have should have a line item for maintaining, you know, these these beautiful project that will will come online for the city. So, that's it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
No other comments? We now go to K, motion response, Four Way Stop, Sign, High and Sherman. Counselor Newen?
Thank you for the report, Mr. Managers. I'm all set on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. We now go to 4.2, informational report, informational Lowell High School OPM report, April 2022. Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the council. This is just for edification of the counselors. We have an SBC meeting on Thursday at 6:00 PM. It'll be hosted here. And this is just an opportunity, if you'd like to review it prior to, we will have all of our folks present to answer any questions that you may have on this particular piece.
Through you to the manager. If we could also provide the council with the list of all of these abbreviations that go on here, PCO, ABC, CDE, whatever they're putting in here. But I understand what most of them are, but I don't know that everyone's going to understand what a potential change order is and things like that. But one of the things that really is sticks out when you look at it, there's a lot of potential change orders in here. And we would, you know, I wonder what it is in supply chain chain issues are in here. You can see that, which we were told maybe a few months before you were here. The CFO probably would remember that we were told we weren't going to have supply chain issues. And everything was because they had buying chain issues. And everything was good. They had buying power. We had all of these things going on. And my question comes down, everything is printed extremely small too, um, where you can put on glasses and a magnifying glass and you still need to be able to read the, when you just look at the timeframe. And I don't know if anyone else had a problem reading it, but when you start reading through, it's really, really small and hard to read. And, um, when you look at some of the challenges that they wrote in there, I think, you know, the bleacher delivery, is that a challenge? You know, we're looking at that. And, you know, we were told that was gonna be online. Um, some of the other things you look in here, um, you look at the supply chain issue that they're talking about. So I, I just, I'm giving them a heads up on some of the questions that we're actually gonna put out there when they get here. So I, I think that if we can have a list of the abbreviations that they're also putting in here so that we can all understand the same piece and it's not jogging to a lot of us, that would be extremely helpful going forward.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and through you to the Council. Uh, there is a supply and issue, a supply chain issue that came to our attention. And, uh, quite frankly, the terms, Counselor, uh, I agree wholeheartedly with you on the PCOs and the ABCs and the DEF. So, uh, that is something that we can discuss, uh, on Thursday. And, uh, if anyone has an opportunity not, cannot be here, but is gonna watch it, uh, you know, uh, on, um, Zoom or something, if you have the questions, I'll gladly have them, uh, asked and, and get those answers.
Any other comments or questions? Counselor Scott?
I'll just make a motion to bundle 5.1 to 5.4.
Oh, sure. Great. Thank, thank you. If there are no more, uh, comments or questions on, on informational, uh, just need a motion to accept and place on file by Counselor Rourke, second by Counselor Leahy, all in favor of the I, per say no, the I's have it, motions carry. Um, motion by Counselor Scott to balance the votes. We can still talk about it, but just make it, um, sample it, simplify it. Uh, motion to bundle by Counselor Scott, second by Counselor Robinson. Um, I'm gonna just read the, the headlines for each, uh, vote items. 5.1, vote, accept, expend $68,021, $221 and some eight cents, COVID-19 Sexual and Domestic Violence Trust Fund, LPD. 5.2, vote, accept, expend fiscal year 23 earmarked fund, Lowell Locks. 5.3, vote, transfer funds for hearing officer law. And the last one in the bundle is 5.4, vote, transfer funds for postage, treasurer. Any comments or questions on any of the, uh, vote? Counselor Gishia?
On, on 5.3, hearing officer, at one time, the city used to use the Assistant City Manager of Operations as a hearing officer, along with the parking department person. And, um, they went over these things. I don't understand why we have to separate this out when they're part of the team that used to review all of these hearings. And it, I believe the clerk was in on those hearings also because it was all through that. But through you to the Manager.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and through you to the Council. Uh, Council, that is just a stopgap measure right now. Typically, what we've had, and, um, the election commissioner did this, um, we're in the process of putting out the election commission, excuse me, the election commissioner again, um, to, uh, and that's going to be in their job description. So this is kind of a stopgap measure. And I, my understanding is it's a, we have to act within a, a particular amount of days if people are being fined in order to kinda continue, um, or the, or the fines will dissolve. It's my understanding. So that's what, that's what this is, that's what's happening here.
Perfect. Thank you. And, and on 5.4, so on, uh, 5.4 postage, uh, the postage went up substantially. And I'm just wondering what the cause of the postage going up that much was, um, as you look at it. Cause it's gone up by $42,000, a 26% increase in just the postage. So I'm just trying to figure, wrap my head around how this postage went up that much.
Uh, through Mr. Manager to Mr. Baldwin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, in response to your question, Counselor, the, the problem or the issue that necessitates the transfer is twofold. One, that, uh, the costs for non-COVID mailing have increased. So the city is doing more business, uh, via mail and that, a lot of which is in the clerk's office. We're offering, uh, birth certificates and other vital records which we're mailing out. So that's one portion of it. But the other, uh, the other side is this has been a budget that we've reduced over the years to save money. So, uh, if you were, if you were to look at the postage budget, which the cost center for it is in the treasurer's office, is $165,000 in this fiscal year. Several years ago, that budget was well over $200,000. And in order to each year make cuts to meet the budget, uh, we've reduced this budget. And we've hit about a critical point. Uh, and last year, we had a, a significant amount of federal money available and a lot of the mailings that we were doing were related to COVID. So we were able to fund the postage cost with CARES money. This year, uh, not as much mailing is associated with COVID. And so we're, we're, uh, required to use general fund money to pay for it. And it seems like that budget may not be sufficient moving forward.
If, if we're taking on a cost for, say, something out of the clerk's office or something like that, are we adding to the fee that's initially charged, the postage part, or are we just charging the same rate as we would if someone walked in the door?
Mr. Baldwin?
Well, that's an excellent point, Counselor. We have not raised the fee for, we did a wholesale fee change and some of the counselors who are here at the time may remember in 2016, 2017, where we, we took a holistic look at the fee schedule and looked at each fee to make sure that it was covering the cost for which, uh, it was associated. We haven't done so since then. And I, it may be time for the Council to consider, uh, a revision of the fee schedule for matters just as this, to make sure that the cost, uh, that, that we're requiring for the fee is commensurate with the service that we're providing. So we're not losing money for providing these services, so to speak.
So is that something that we would have to put a motion in to do? Or is that something that you will come back to us with a fee structure, um, revisions? Would you be able to do that without motions? Or you, do we have to put in a motion looking to have that done? Because I don't think if somebody drives down here, they should be charged the same amount as if I have to mail a birth certificate or anything to Texas. I, I think that the, the person being mailed, it should, it should cost more because there's a creation of costs for us. So would that fee revision have to be one of us putting in a motion? Or is that something that would be a recommendation from the manager's office?
Mr. Baldwin?
Thank you, Counselor. This is something that we've looked into for a new revision already. Uh, I, I think prior to this, because of COVID, there was a hesitation to put forward a, a fee schedule increase. However, this is something where the, uh, the city manager would put forward a proposal to the Council to amend the fee schedule. And then, uh, I'm basing this on last time around when we did this. That matter gets referred to the Finance Subcommittee for further discussion and deliberation. But this is data and analysis that we've done previously and can bring forward a proposal if the Council were willing to consider something of that sort.
How quickly could that be done? Because when we're looking at increases in taxes, the revenue generators from user fees should be the goal, is to actually pass the cost on that it actually costs us to the person using that service. And if someone's using it from outside the, the state or outside the city and asking for the mailings, I just think if, if we can get that sooner so that we can actually look at the budget and see if the budget numbers would change, um, that could be helpful.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Yam, I saw your hand up earlier. Still have a question?
Um, if I could just follow up on the, the, the usage fee, um, in addition to mailing out, um, nowadays, we do everything electronically. And I understand that some documents need original copies, like birth certificates and stuff, but more and more like courts and other, uh, entity, legal entity accept, you know, um, electronic versions, you know, in real estate. We are very, uh, up ahead on these, um, contracts and stuff that was electronically signed. And the court upheld that it's legal, it's acceptable. So I'm thinking of looking into that kind. In addition, we would love to hear, you know, the proposal. And then we wanna be able to offset the expenses of, of doing business so, um, we don't lose money providing services as you stated. Um, thank you so much, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah. Uh, Mr. Manager, anybody wanna respond to that? Or, uh, through Mr. Managers to Mr. Baldwin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. These are helpful comments from the Council and, and very good ideas. I, I think that it's reasonable to expect that, uh, the manager's office could bring forward a proposal. It would take some deliberation, as I mentioned. Some fees, uh, for things like alcohol licenses, their jurisdiction is with the, uh, the License Commission. And so it would require that body to have input onto the fees and to take action. Uh, but there are other, the, the administration has been thinking of these types of things as well as, excuse me, not just fees that need an increase, but areas where we don't charge fees. The one, the specific one that comes to mind, we talked about this a few weeks ago, is, uh, for the electronic vehicle chargers. We don't charge people for the electricity that they use at those stations, but that is a cost that the city incurs. In order to add a fee, the City Council would need to amend the fee schedule. So all of those, uh, would come forward in a comprehensive fee schedule proposal. And that is something that, uh, we look forward to bringing forward in FY2023.
Counselor Yam?
Um, may I make a motion that, you know, to ask, um, through you, Mr. Mayor, to the manager and to Mr. Baldwin, to come back with the Council a fee schedule that propose increase so that we, uh, as a Council, through maybe Subcommittee, uh, Finance Subcommittee can hash it out and hopefully pass it along the budget for 2023?
Motion by Counselor Yam, second by Counselor Scott, all in favor of the I, per say no, the I's have it, motions carry. Are you all set, Counselor Yam?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. I just have one quick, uh, regarding the 4.2.
On 5.2 or?
Oh, uh, yes. Uh, when, when we say the Lowell Locks, is that, has to do with the garage by the, um, by, by, um, by the, um, the, uh, Inns and Conference? Is that Lowell Locks Garage?
Mr. Manager?
Uh, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and through you to the Council. That's actually the Lowell Locks, not the garage itself. The Lowell Locks, which are F and, near F and G Street.
No, Central Street.
Central Street, excuse me. Middlesex Community College, over by Middlesex Community College, the Lowell Locks there. That's what we're actually talking about. Or that's, I apologize. That's what this is talking about.
Yes, thank you. What are the, the fund, the fund to do, to renovate it, to repair?
Uh, through Mr. Manager to Ms. McCall.
Um, thank you. Through you, Mr. Mayor, um, to the rest of the City Council. Uh, about two years ago, um, the city was in receipt of earmark funding to do a master planning process to make improvements, um, both to the Lowell Locks infrastructure and the chamber, but also to make it more accessible. Um, the city really did see it as a really great potential economic development opportunity. Uh, the City Council has actually bonded a million dollars towards this project since the result of that master plan. Um, the price tag on the big picture is about 15 million. Uh, so the earmark money is to help with immediate ADA issues. If you've ever been back there, it's quite beautiful. Um, there is a lot of potential. Um, but right now, the, uh, the ramp that connects from the Central Street Bridge down to the site, which is currently blocked because of the construction, um, it's not gonna last. There's also heaving bricks, both on the Middlesex Community College side and in Conference Center side, um, that, you know, is not make, is not accessible to anyone who's not able bodied. Uh, there is a lot of ownership out there. And so it really is gonna be a joint project, but this money can help with some immediate safety concerns. And that's what we intend to, to use them for.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor, and thanks.
You're all set. Now, Counselor Scott?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Actually, Mike, I was gonna make the same motion. Someone else said, I actually had reached out to CFO, um, Connor Baldwin, I think in the past week or two about the user fees as well. Um, the one around the parking placard, we had, we had discussed just, uh, you know, a meeting ago. And I think it's pretty important that we look at all of them. I mean, that was $10, which was very low. Uh, probably didn't even cost the, cover the cost of printing and making the, the product. So there's definitely a lot of other, um, items to look at as far as that goes. As far as the postage goes, is that an online payment that's made? Are we able to just separate out the postage as a fee? Like when I pay my water bill, they charge me 40 cents extra, you know, for the, the water bill to be paid. Can you just charge a separate postage fee?
Through Mr. Manager to Mr. Baldwin.
Counselor, I'd have to get back to you on that. I don't believe so. Um, we fund the mail machine, which is physically located in the Elections Division, but the, as I mentioned before, the cost center for it is the Treasurer's Department. Uh, every so often, the Elections Division will add funding to the machine, which get, which meters all of the city mail that goes out. Um, and so as, insofar as adding a specific charge to bills for postage, um, that may be governed by state law, but, uh, we'd have to get a report back to you on whether we could itemize that on the bills for residents, if that's what you're asking.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Ms. Mayor, through you to the Council. I just want to set the expectation that we, we will look at all of these fees. Um, and it probably will take considerable amount of time, um, hoping, I would, I would think, hoping in the beginning of 2023 to have something like that completed for you, for you to review, um, or actually, um, to put into, into play. Because we will, Counselor, go through every, everything that we're, we're charging and to find out if it is acceptable and work with, um, the folks over the, you know, with the, with the liquor license boards and things of that nature to find out what's happening. So this will take a little bit of time for us to do that, accomplish that goal.
No other comments? We need a motion to adopt all the, uh, the bundle votes by Counselor Mousia, second by Counselor Nguyen. Mr. Clerk, will call, please?
Counselor Yam?
Yes.
Mayor Chow?
Yes.
Counselor Drinkwater?
Yes.
Counselor Gishia?
Yes.
Counselor Janessa?
Yes.
Counselor Leahy?
Yes.
Counselor Mercia?
Yes.
Counselor Nguyen?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Rourke?
Yes.
Counselor Scott?
Yes.
11 yeas.
We now go to, okay. We need a, uh, motion to, uh, take an item out of order, the, uh, 60-day trial, uh, traffic orders.
Put it on the agenda, so it's not out of order.
Okay, just put it on the agenda there, okay. Uh, by Counselor Robinson, second by Counselor Gishia. Um, is this going to?
Yeah, we're gonna.
Through Mr. Manager to Ms. McCall.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the rest of the Council. Uh, this is a 60-day traffic, 60-day trial traffic order that, um, I intended to put on the agenda about a month ago. It's for handicap parking on Ellis Avenue. That was a result of a citizen petition. Um, church parking on Lakeview Avenue per the church's request. And then also a motion response, um, from Counselor Scott about, uh, no parking signage on Meadowcroft Street. So we're just looking for approval so we can move forward with these projects. Thank you.
Counselor Gishia, motion to adopt, second by Counselor Mousia. Mr. Clerk, do you need to roll call on this one?
Yes, we do.
Will call, please?
Counselor Yam?
Yes.
Uh, Mayor Chow?
Yes.
Counselor Drinkwater?
Yes.
Counselor Gishia?
Yes.
Counselor Janessa?
Yes.
Uh, Counselor Leahy?
Yes.
Counselor Mercia?
Yes.
Counselor Nguyen?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Rourke?
Yes.
Counselor Scott?
Yes.
That's 11 yeas.
Thank you. We now go to, uh, six ordinances from the City Manager. 6.1, ordinance, amend zoning, section 4.3.3, home occupation, as of right. Any, um, comment suggestions on this one? If not, motion to refer to public hearing on June 14, 2022 at 7:00 PM by Counselor Drinkwater, second by Counselor Gishia, all in favor of the I, per say no, the I's have it, motions carry. We now go to seven resolutions. Resolution, African Unity Day, where full reading, second reading by title. And the City Council, resolution, the City Council of the City Floor wishes to go on record to declare May 25th, and the City Floor as African Unity Day. Any comment or suggestion?
Move to approve?
Yes.
Uh, Mayor Chow?
Yes.
Counselor Drinkwater?
Yes.
Uh, Counselor Gishia?
Yes.
Counselor Janessa?
Yes.
Counselor Leahy?
Yes.
Counselor Mercia?
Yes.
Counselor Nguyen?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Rourke?
Yes.
Counselor Scott?
Yes.
That's 11 yeas.
Did we have the, uh, municipal facilities Subcommittee tonight?
No.
So that was, so we'll, we'll table that.
We didn't have a quorum.
Didn't have a quorum. Okay. We now go to nine petitions, 9.1, claim, one property damage, motion to refer to Law Department for report and recommendation by Counselor Leahy, second by Counselor Mousia, all in favor of the I, per say no, the I's have it, motions carry. 9.2, National Grid requests replacement of four-inch regulator station on Lakeview Avenue. Um, motion to refer to public hearing on June 14, 2022 at 7:00 PM by Counselor Nguyen, second by Counselor Robinson, all in favor of the I, per say no, the I's have it, motions carry. 9.3, National Grid requests installation of seven feet of gas main along Lowell Town. 9.3, National Grid requests installation of seven feet of gas main along Lower Thames Street. Motion to refer to public hearing on June 14, 2022, at 7:00 PM by Counselor Robinson, second by Counselor Rourke, on favor of the I post say no, the I have it, motions carry. We now go to 10, city council motions. 10.1, we start with Counselor Leahy, request city manager have proper department look at Burnham Road to possibly install curbing and/or berm to prevent washout after storms, second by Counselor Rourke, Counselor Leahy?
Thank you. This probably was brought up in the past, too, and it's a very important street in Delvedere, and if we could, if we could have someone take a look at it. The water tends to roll over to the left side of the road, and so if we could just check that out for some of the residents at the lower end of the street where they're getting a lot of water going on to their property, be appreciated. Thank you.
Counselor Mosier?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the city manager. Mr. Manager, you were not sitting in that seat when I made a motion for a berm over on Barbara Street. And I get a call quite frequently asking, what's the status of it? What's the status of it? I keep telling them that I'll redo it because the motion response that I got was the fact that they don't have enough money. So I said, well, could we wait till the next budget? And for some reason, we still don't have it. So I'm waiting for the next budget to come in. They said that asphalt has been, has risen, and I said, I real, I didn't realize that, but if you tell me asphalt has risen, so has these people's taxes. It's risen, too, and they still paid it. So please, send someone over there to look at it. Now they said they sent someone over there to look at it, but it's not to an emergency type of situation, but yet the property in the frontage of the house washes away down the street to the point where the city goes over and reseeds. What, why can't we put a berm there and stop the city from going over there and keep reseeding it? So I'm still asking through this administration, could you please just put a berm in front of this person's home? I think there's another neighbor up the street that needs it, too. Therefore, I will have a free night without a phone call. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. No other comments? On favor of the I post say no, the I have it, motions carry. We now go to 10.2, Counselor Leahy, request city manager update city council on homeless coordinator position and any new updates on programs or resources, second by Counselor Scott. Counselor Leahy?
Thank you. Through you, the manager. With this motion, if you could just give us an update on where we might be with hiring the coordinator. And then what I'd like to see us do is, with the new person coming in, see what's available statewide, federal-wise. You know, we really have to put a program together where not only housing is available, but education, employment opportunities. You know, I look around downtown and some of, some of the people that are out on the street want something to do. They want a job, they want to get educated. You know, they're, they're, they're through no fault of their own, but they're there. So, yeah, part of the program, if we can get some education along with housing and job stability through a coordinated effort of state and federal programs, then, you know, this is going to go a long way. So there just seems to be a lot of talk lately about housing, but we can't just house people. We have to give them opportunities. Thank you.
Good comment, Counselor. Seeing other hands? Counselor Robinson?
Thank you. I'd just like to mention, Mass Hire has a lot of employment opportunities right now, too, so that's something to try to keep pushing to the public. Even, I believe, some of our summer programs will hire and utilize at Mass Hire, so there are employment opportunities down at Mass Hire in downtown. Thank you.
Seeing, Counselor Scott?
Sorry, just one more quick comment. I'd just like to take a minute to thank Assistant City Manager Christine McCall for taking on the roles of this position for so long. I'm sure there's nobody that is more eager to have this position filled, but I would just like to thank you. I was talking to her on the phone, and she was, I think, running up the railroad tracks, looking at a site or something, so just take a minute to thank you for that.
Great comment. No other comments? On favor of the I post say no, the I have it, motions carry. We now go to motion 10.3, Counselor Mosier, request city manager provide a report regarding roadwork being done on Andover Street near the Tewksbury Line and the immediate area. Provide timeline of work replacing trees, repaving, et cetera, second by Counselor Yum, second by Counselor Nguyen. Missing, Counselor Mosier?
Yes, thank, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do have a lot of people in the neighborhood that see me in the supermarket or wherever, and they keep asking me, I live up by your area, what's happening up there, and what's the timeline, and what's happening? And I feel awful that I don't actually know. I know that, are we going to even have a plan in place to replace the eight trees that they took down in the area? I know that this gentleman wanted arfaviety trees, but if I'm pronouncing it right, but it seems that that's impossible because their tree roots grow into the water and they're not, it's not a good tree to put on a side, by a sidewalk. So I just like to know, and in the past, and I know that it's been hot lately, I don't see any work taking place in that immediate area. They said that on a particular Monday, it was going to start, but I haven't seen it. I don't know what the standstill is, I don't know what the delay is, I don't know if it's the heat, I don't know if they're waiting for a pot that's going to take another 10 months, I, I, I don't know what's happening. So it's just informational is what I'd like. Thank you.
Counselor Gishia?
Do we know who the contractor is that's doing that work?
Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and through you to the council, it's Mass DOT. We have some of this information that we've received just recently, and we should be able to respond timely within the next two weeks.
When Mass DOT does work over there, are they required to put back the trees that they take down and everything else? So the trees will go back?
Yeah.
Okay, so they restore the whole area back to as best they can with the trees?
Correct. That's what's supposed to happen, Counselor.
And also, that, that street is cemented, and they ripped up the cement to put in the piping, and they put hot top on some of the areas on Andover Street. Is that how it's going to remain?
Mr. Manager?
Sorry, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counselor, that's something that we just received recently. I will find out about that, but typically, typically, they're supposed to respond, replace with, in like, what was there previously or better. So that would be one of those issues. And, and you are correct with the trees, and, you know, which tree is best. We're even having that discussion in town-to-town, but we should probably be able to get all that information.
A nice flowering tree would be pretty. I just also want to say this. They ripped up the roadway, no doubt about that, but they packed it with sand that, in front of the streets that come out into Andover Street. And when they did that, with the traveling of the vehicles, it has gone down some to the point where I was cutting the grass, and the neighbor said, I can't go up there anymore, my car is sinking and my wheels were spinning. So I went out the next morning early, looking to see if there was anybody, so that I could ask them if they could fill, fill it in again. I don't know if they could put a grate over it, you know, those steel grates, at least it would be a little bit better. I don't know, but the, that's why we're waiting to know what's happening there, because it's inconveniencing with the sinking of the dirt. So that's another thing. Thank you.
Any other comments? Hearing none, on favor of the I post say no, the I have it, motions carry. We now go to 10.4, Counselor Mosier, request city manager provide an update regarding development of college stadium and the Mont Athletic Complex and refer to the Parks and Recreation Subcommittee, second by Counselor Nguyen. Counselor Mosier?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. That does speak for itself. I think we have some more information. Matt LaLasha requested that we hold that meeting, and it's comprised of quite a few people that address the council with their ideas, but they have progress and they want to share it with us. Counselor, former Counselor Bill Samaris was on that committee. I think Counselor Rourke, are you on that committee?
Not, not on it, but.
And Melissa DeRozia, she was as well. So anyway, if we could just refer this motion to the Parks Subcommittee. Thank you.
Motion by Counselor Mosier to refer to the Parks Subcommittee, what's in the motion, so any other comments? On favor of the I post say no, the I have it, motions carry. Motion 10.5, Counselor Nguyen, request city auditor provide report on the depreciation schedule for all the assets that the city owns, second by Counselor Yum. Counselor Nguyen?
Motion speak for itself, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor. On favor of the I post say no, the I have it, motions carry. Motion 10.6, Counselor Nguyen, request city manager have CFO provide a report on health insurance trust fund, second by Counselor Drinkwater. Counselor Nguyen?
Same, Mr. Mayor. Motion speak for itself.
Thank you, Counselor. On favor of the I post say no, the I have it, motions carry. 10.7, Counselor Nguyen, request city manager have CFO report on debt exclusion process for the $38.5 million cost overrun at Lowell High School construction project, second by Counselor Gishia.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
For three?
No, thank, no, thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, this is really interesting. I'd just like to know the process. I know that the CFO will give us the process as to where, how we can get the debt, you know, one we pay off, you know, get off the book. That'd be great. This is just one of the project, and maybe many more projects that we, the cities is planned to invest in. You know, they, you know, one you pay off, it's not stay permanent, it's just off the book. In that way, you know, you can sell it to, you know, taxpayer and saying that this is the cost overrun, $38.5 million. One we pay this off, it's off the book. Same thing, any other big project, because it's easier to sell that way to taxpayer than, you know, one they pay off, we pay off, and then it's still staying there in the book. And so let's find out the process, if we can do it. I know the CFO is very, you know, knowledgeable on this, and he hopefully give us report on it, so looking forward to the report and question.
No other comments? On favor of the I post say no, the I have it, motions carry. Motion 10.8, Counselor Nguyen, request city manager have the CFO report the balance of the funding in the reserve account from revenue derived from excise on marijuana retail dedicated to the municipal infrastructure, second by Counselor Janessa. Counselor Nguyen?
I think the, the CFO have report on this, I believe, four or five months ago on this, so basically ask for an update on it, and that's all. Thanks.
Counselor Robinson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To you, through you to the CFO. What's the sunset clause on this? Is it five years on the, the excise tax that the homeowner receives?
Through Mr. Manager to Mr. Baldwin?
Counselor, through you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, Counselor. There is a sunset clause on the host community agreement payments, but not on the excise tax. And the excise tax is the funding source for the municipal facility stabilization fund, so that will exist in perpetuity.
Thank you.
Counselor Mosier?
So through you, Mr. Mayor, to Connor Baldwin, that sunset clause for five years is on the host community, so it expires soon. Do we, what year are we into?
Mr. Baldwin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have, each host community agreement is an individual agreement between the city and the dispensary, and, or, I suppose, for cultivation as well. Each one has its own terms, so the sunset for each one of them would be different.
Well, whatever difference it is, if we don't do anything about it, that'll be it, it'll be gone. I want to know if we could renew it so that we, we get some benefits still. We're going to get 3% probably for five years, and that's the end of it because the sunset clause ran out? Is it possible we could renew it and keep that revenue coming? I know they're making an awful lot of money on people that are patronizing their businesses. Could we look into that to see how we can renew this sunset clause, if we can? Whether it be the dispensary, the cultivation, whatever, see if we can do something. I don't want something to slip by because we didn't check it out and we lost all that revenue. I don't want to lose that money.
Through Mr. Manager?
God knows they're making enough of it. I want some of it. I want it.
Mr. Baldwin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and these are all excellent questions, Counselor. The host community agreements, I believe, are governed by the Cannabis Control Commission, and I do believe that the, the length of the agreements and the ability to extend them are all matters that are before them now. I don't know what the current, most current update was. Mr. Slagle was the point person on those matters.
Yeah, he was wonderful.
But we can get a report, get the council all the information necessary so that consideration can be made for what, what to do next with these agreements.
Yes, please do that, because I don't want it to slip by through a technicality and we lost all that revenue that we will probably have if we check it out. Thank you.
Counselor Yum?
If I may also request, because you, Mr. Baldwin, you give us a report and stating exactly what you say, the, the income and also the host community that will expire shortly. In that, you mentioned about percentage that using for the building, maintenance of the, the public building. The percentage that I remember offhand is 25%. So my thought is that why can't we, is it possible we can increase to 50% because the public building need, need help, you know? City hall, bathroom, need helps as well. Thank you.
Mr. Baldwin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the, I just want to draw a distinction that there's host community agreement revenue, which is a general fund receipt, and then the, the excise, which the council voted as a percentage for, excuse me, dispense, marijuana dispensaries. From that revenue on the, the excise, 25% of it, every quarter, we get a payment from the state. 25% of that amount goes into the Special Purpose Stabilization Fund that the council set up. The law that was passed in municipal modernization requires communities to set at least 25%, but it is within the jurisdiction of this council to increase that amount if that were your desire. And so it could be anything above 25%, but 25% is the minimum. That was the amount that was established by the council in 2018.
Right. That was four years ago, said new council, and we would like to revisit that, and we want to up that to about 50% at least. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through Mr. Baldwin.
Counselor Robinson, then Counselor Scott?
I just had a quick question. As far as, do those sunset clauses generally start once doors are open, or is it, do they start once the approval is given? Because I know sometimes businesses are tied up in a lengthy process to get the doors open.
Through Mr. Manager to Madam Solicitor.
We can double-check that, but I believe it's when the, when the business actually commences.
Thank you.
Are you all set? Counselor Robinson, Counselor Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to make sure I understand correctly. As far as the number of dispensaries that we can have right now, I know it's part of formula, I thought, that had to do with the number of liquor stores, et cetera, but are we capped currently? We're capped at five, I think, right now? Is that correct?
Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and through you to the counselor. We were a yes community that voted yes, so we were able to put it to five. And this is set by the council. That's the minimum amount that we could have. We could go up.
What is the maximum that we can have?
There is no maximum.
Right.
Okay, so that's something, if we're talking about the revenue going away, I mean, that is something that we can discuss, expanding the number? Correct?
Sure, yeah, you could. We, we could discuss that, but right now it's at five, and we could go to six, seven.
Thank you.
Counselor Rourke?
Yeah, that's right, just so we can get it straight. So there's no cap at all? We can go to someone, we can go to seven, 10, 15?
Mr. Manager?[1787.66] To Ms. McCall.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The city council voted to limit it to five, so right now we only allow five. There is no maximum. The city council could, it's just what they, what we feel is best for the city. And the five that we chose, it was thoughtfully chosen throughout the city, so it's not to negatively impact any one neighborhood because of perceived negative impacts of a retail dispensary.
So you said there were proceeds. Has there been any documented, I guess, negative impacts, complaints or whatnot on the ones that are in business right now?
We have had a series of complaints, mostly due to odor, but that's typically our cultivation facilities, not our retail. Retail really comes around parking, queuing, in and out of a site, typical site plan issues of any retail business.
This may be a question for Connor, but the money coming in from these is pretty substantial for just, what, three we have right now?
We have three open.
Oh, retail, sorry. So right now, we are capped at the five?
That's correct, and we are only recently starting to recognize a lot of that revenue that you're referring to, Counselor. So as the other, the other two open, we will continue to see both the general fund revenue and the revenue in the municipal facility stabilization fund grow as well.
So if we want to allow another dispensary or two or whatever, does that come to council for approval? Is that an ordinance change? Or is it a motion to be filed, a vote alone?
It would be, the number of dispensaries, it would be an ordinance change through the council.
So to start that process, council had to file a motion to change the ordinance. Does that make sense? Since we voted initially to cap it at five?
Yes, Counsel.
All right. Thank you.
Counselor Yem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you, through the managers. If you, the next report, would you kindly give us the number of how many dispensary and cultivating site in the city, so we know how many? And the other has to do with the host community, so we will have five right now, host community that will expire. So if there is no limit, the council can then maybe add another five. So the five that host community expired, so the new one that the council approved will generating additional income for the city. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Through Mr. Manager to Ms. McCall.
So, thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you to the council. Right now we have five host community agreements for adult use, retail, and then we have 10 cultivation sites for adult use. Right now we regulate the time, manner, and place of both cultivation and retail through our zoning code. So not only would we have to increase the cap if we wanted to do it, we'd probably have to take a look at the zoning. We did include stipulations that, you know, you couldn't be within 1,000 feet of certain things, so I think it's probably a worthy discussion at subcommittee before, but.
Counselor Noonan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So with regard to the cultivation, there's no number, there's no set number, it's only for recreational. Out of those five, I believe only three is open. The first one is Patriot Care. There's two other got the host community agreement, but has yet to, they are in a process, they're at a different stage right now, not open yet. I think it's true, it's always a good idea to look at it and using the Patriot Care as they open, getting a report from the police department to see if there's any issue at all, and then, you know, a possibility for updated or look at to amend the ordinance to have it more than five, maybe eight. I think it's coming up as well, is I know Wendy, the Director of Developmental Service, Eric Slagel, before he left, is working on the delivery as well. So that, it's up to these councils as well to set as to how many delivery license we go into issue. So there's a lot of those. I think using the previous report that Eric Slagel submitted to the council, maybe update a little bit, and this will be an educational for all the council to have going forward. Thank you.
Counselor Rook, do you still have a comment or question? Are you all set? Counselor Gishir, and then Counselor Robinson.
Could I make a motion to send this to the cannabis subcommittee, the ordinance of the cannabis subcommittee?
Sure. Motion by Counselor Gishir, second by Counselor Drinkwater. On favor say no, the eyes have it, motions carry. Counselor, any other comments from anybody? Counselor Robinson, are you all set?
Last question. On the retail, we have five that are allowed. Do we have to separate, or do we separate medical or recreational retail locations?
That's a really great question. I believe we put in the zoning that we did not want to co-locate, but I think there is a state regulation that supersedes that. So the, I believe the dispensary on, at the old registry, they moved their license from a different state, a different city in Massachusetts to Lowell, and so they are able to have both. So right now we wanted to keep them separate, but there is going to be an existing, there's two, Patriot Care also co-locates because they predated, they had licenses before, when marijuana was with the Public Health Department before the Cannabis Control Commission was created.
Thank you very much.
Any other comments? There are no other comments. I just want to make a quick comment from up here, if there's no objection. I, for the moment, if the manager's administration could explore an exhaust option on, to extend the sunset clause, try to get revenue through the five existing facilities first before considering expanding the number of facilities, because I believe from, I was not on that council, but I believe from the discussion, there were a lot of concerns from the neighborhoods about having many facilities enabled and so forth. So since we approved five already, why not try to work on increasing the revenue to the city from those five existing one? Because if you were going to increase, if you were going to have a new one, going to be facing the same social issues, and you're not really, you're not really increasing revenue, all you are doing is replacing revenue. So if you want to just have the same revenue or maybe increase the revenue from the five facilities, try to exhaust different options, increasing the sunset clause, maybe increase fee, maybe not as five, 50% as Counselor Yem said, but higher, but please look into expanding what we have now, work with what we have now. Thank you. Counselor Rook.
Mr. Mayor, I appreciate your suggestion. You know, I think there will be a motion next council meeting, you know, to maybe look to increase it from five. You know, I think that dispensaries now pay a lot of money, you know, that does not go into their pockets, it goes out to the state and to the city. You know, I would work on a motion maybe for the following meeting, but as of right now, I don't know if I'd support just looking to increase the sunset clause right now. I'd like to look at both scenarios and maybe make a comparison. Thank you.
And now the comments? Here none. On favor say no, the eyes have it, motions carry. We still have one more motion from Councilor Noonan. 10.9, Councilor Noonan, request city council declare first Friday in June as Gun Violence Awareness Day, second by Counselor Musia. Councilor Noonan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This declaration is really to honor and remember all victim and survivor of gun violence, and also to declare that we, as a city, state, and country must do more to reduce it. And that's basically, you know, I know that the city of Lowell cannot do much, but we will do what we can, and just saying that we want this to stop and we want this, you know, to end. Thank you.
Any other comments? Here none. On favor say no, the eyes have it, motions carry. We now go to 10.10, Counselor Gishir, request city manager have the proper department add a map and location of all electric vehicle changing stations to the parking department's main webpage, second by Counselor Leahy. Counselor Gishir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had a person come in and ask where the charging stations are in the city, and I think it's even more so that we should put on the main page, because it's an update now where you can click on where charging stations are in the city and what cost is associated with each one. You know, I think we have to add cost, obviously, some of these. We've got to start figuring out what the rates are, as you said earlier, Mr. Manager. But I think that a map on there that shows a person who comes into the city, okay, here's where I can charge, you just go to the homepage of the city, you click on, and it will show them a map or a location so that they can put it in their GPS and figure out where they're going. Thank you.
No other comments? On favor say no, the eyes have it, motions carry. 10.11, Counselor Gishir, request city manager update the city council on open positions within the city workforce and filling the positions in the fiscal year 23 budget, second by Counselor Scott. Counselor Gishir.
Motion speaks for itself.
Thank you, Counselor. On favor say no, the eyes have it, motions carry. Motion 10.12, Counselor Yem, Counselor Gishir, request city manager and appropriate departments, i.e. MIS and LTC, establish a protocol to allow still photos, short videos to accompany a motion. Any comment, Counselor Yem or Counselor Gishir?
If I could.
Counselor Yem.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This motion is in response to the needs of visual pictures to explain the intents of a motion. Last week, remember, we have two residents from the Acres came in to talk about the measure, the calming measure of the traffic at the corner of Broadway and Suffolk Street. One of the lady have to print a picture of the street to show it to the council, but we all can't see it. So we, you know, 21st century, we have a lot of electronics and we have cellphone, that capability of taking pictures and uploading and all of that. Through the, through speaking with the LTC, there is, I was told, there is no protocol at this point in accommodating or adding photos to the motion. So this motion is asked if the manager through appropriate department looking into a way that we, as a council, when we make a motion, similar to what I also make a motion about the illegal signs at the corner of school and Rock Street about saying the truck entering. So it would allow us to really put it up, so not just us as a council, but people at home watching the council meeting can see exactly the location and properties or whatever the situation that we made a motion is about. So that's the whole idea of this motion. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other comments? Counselor Gishir.
I just think that in some cases, it may save the city some time, resources, if there was a picture of what you were talking about, so that the staff didn't have to actually go out there and look at these things, and it might be easier on the staff to be able to look at what the council is talking about and bring it up on a GIS or something, rather than having them drive out there, look at the same thing that you're taking a picture of, but then they could have a plan put in place prior to actually going out there and then just make the repair and move on. If there's a stop sign that's too low, like we saw trucks entering sign where it was too low, we could have just made that adjustment, rather than send somebody out, look at it, come back with a report, and then fix it, when we could just send somebody over. And maybe these are things that can be directly sent right to the manager and not have to go through the motion process.
Here no other comments? On favor say no, the eyes have it, motions carry. Motion 10.13, Counselor Yem, request Mayor Chow establish a city council veteran subcommittee, second by Counselor Robinson. Counselor Yem.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And again, this motion is in response to a suggestion by a veteran. Also, he's a former Lowell City Councilor to plan, in order to plan for various event to honor a veteran by creating this subcommittee, so the subcommittee can work along with the appropriate entity and volunteer to plan various event. Oh, by the way, if you have not seen, I want to encourage you to look at the banners that was up at the JFK Plaza. I just want to thank you, Mr. Mayor, and manager, Tom Golden, Eric Lamarche, the Director of Lowell Veterans Commission, for an outstanding hanging that hometown heroes banners at the JFK Plaza. So during this past weekend Memorial Day event, I met many Gold Star and veteran family, thanking the city for bringing back the banners and for laying the wreath at various poles and location to honor the Gold Star and veterans that the city dedicated a long time ago. In addition, there's a lot of buzz about the talk about having the parade on Memorial Day and the, on Monday, I met a lady, her husband is a veteran, and she said, oh, I heard that you were planning to have, bring back the parade on Veterans Day, and she said, I used to be a little girl that leading the parade with the baton. I say, well, you will be again doing it when we have it. So, and she's really enjoyed that. She says she's gonna get in touch with me. So this is a really, really exciting, and then the veteran family is so grateful for the city as a whole, and I promised her and them that, you know, that we have a really good city manager and the council who really care about the veterans, so I gave and promised the family that. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Good comment, Counselor. Any other comments? Here none. On favor say no, the eyes have it, motion is carry. We now go to the last motion by Counselor Yem, request rules, subcommittee, set a half-hour rule to read new motions at each city council meeting, second by Counselor Robinson. Counselor Yem.
Thank you so much, Mr. Manager, and again, this motion is in response to last week. We have 20 motion, Mr. Mayor, and you did a good job rushing through for seven minutes to finish the 20 motion. However, I feel that, you know, it is not fair to the maker of the motion and to the resident who approached the counselor to request certain things to be addressed, and some motion need to be explained, like I explained all the three motion, so there will be a clear, a clear understanding why the motion is made and what for. And I'm told by my colleague, a few of them, say, well, the language should be better, and I say, true, that's why I would like to make a motion, send it to a rules subcommittee to discuss further, so I appreciate that very much, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did provide comments on the motion, but some of the things I think that maybe we could discuss include, you know, there are 11 of us now, we're a bigger body, so the meetings are going to go longer, and perhaps we could look at the time, maybe starting a half hour early, or even on just nights that we're going to do citations or business, you know, business spotlights, maybe start early on those nights, just to give us a little bit more time. So I think it's definitely worthy of a discussion. Thank you.
Any other comments? Here none. On favor say no, the eyes have it, motions carry. We now go to 11 announcements. Any announcements? Just a quick one, Counselor Yem, I don't want to do your job, but I think you missed one birthday last week. You missed the CFO's birthday of the weekend.
I understand. I, yeah, I slack off. I was busy, so, yeah, so I promised the next council birthday is coming up. I can promise you that.
Even the CFO up here and Ms. McCall up here, everyone up here, so no other adjournments or no other announcements. Motion to adjourn by Counselor Robinson, second by Counselor Leahy, on favor say no, the eyes have it, motions carry.